Very much. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our March 18 regular Town Hall meeting. I would like to officially call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM. We'll start with roll call. Madam Clerk, could you please do roll call?
Mayor James.
Here.
Councilman Winkler.
Here.
Councilman Trolinger.
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward is absent. Councilman Jenkins.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. You all would stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And Counsel, you have received a... Oh, first of all, do I have someone that could make a motion to, if so desired, to approve the meeting agenda?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the meeting agenda as written or as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And Counsel, you have also received a copy of your minutes that were from last month or February that weren't attached and the ones for the March meeting. I will entertain two separate motions. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from the regular meeting on February 25?
I would make a motion to approve the minutes dated February 25, 2025, as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And the minutes for March 11? Any... Anyone?
Madam Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the minutes as presented for March 11.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you very much. It brings us to our part of the meeting where it's public comment. If you would like to speak, I ask that you state your name, whether you live within the Incorporated Town limits, and limit your comments to three minutes, please. And I see the first one that we have signed up, and the only one we have signed up, doesn't mean you don't, you can't spill till speak, is Rebecca Turner. So come on up if you could state your name and whether you live in the Incorporated Town limits. Be great.
Rebecca Turner. I live in the Incorporated Town of La Plata. I'm here to speak for many of the people in the town who are excited, would like to see a raise of voter participation. We'd like to suggest that more election information be made visible in the town. We just had a primary in which less than 200 people voted. The last general election drew less than 600. These horrifying numbers tell us that voters are not taking advantage of their enfranchisement and that we can't be confident that the results represent the opinion of the majority of voters. Even an opinion pollster would reject these numbers. We realize that there are links to candidates' websites, information about the elections and deadlines for registering to vote on the town's website, but more could be done. Each candidate might be provided an equal amount of space on the town website for a summary of their positions, for instance. As the town is responsible for conducting the upcoming election, we would hope that there would be more notices for citizens to be prepared to vote on May 6. As this is a nonpartisan election, the town's encouraging and enabling our neighbors to get out the vote should not have any political undertones to cause folks to take a party side. They will simply be helped to vote for the representative that they feel is most qualified and capable of handling the arduous work of representing them. Many of us who want to encourage a larger voter turnout are willing to put the time and effort to spread the word and ask voters to get to know the candidates. We would like to see signage provided by the town with voting dates and times visible to people as they drive, work, and shop here. We expect the candidates would be responsible for their individual campaign efforts, but we also expect that the town will support and promote this civic activity. The town of La Plata might consider becoming a role model for voter engagement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And is there anyone else I would like to speak this evening? Yeah. Would you like anybody to come with you?
Yes, Mayor.
Would you like to come with you?
First of all, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to the council for providing this time for me to acknowledge a wonderful civil servant who has, I've had the opportunity to work with through the Dorchester Community Center as well as through our church, Haven of Rest Ministries, both located here in La Plata. I own property in La Plata as well as our church is in the town, within the township now. Just wanted to read this. "A certificate of appreciation. This certificate is presented to Chief Carl Schinner in recognition of your dedication and invaluable contributions to the town of La Plata. As the chief of the La Plata Police Department, your commitment and hard work have made a significant difference, and Haven of Rest Ministries is deeply grateful for your service. Signed, myself, Romeo M. McClary, Pastor, Haven of Rest Ministries."
Yes, Mayor.
Those are always the best way to do that.
I was wondering why my partner...
Fantastic. Thank you. Appreciate that. I didn't see you sneak in, so I'm glad you waved to me. All right. Anyone else like to speak this evening? Any other surprises for the chief? All right. Fantastic. Well, thank you very much, Pastor, and thank you for that, those lovely, kind words to our chief. Next up is our Finance Committee report. I see the three of you sitting there. Oh, don't look at one another like who's going to do it. The three of you can come on down there, and you can sit here as you present. I've got two.
We can share one.
Pull this back so we can see each other.
I can sit. Can I sit here?
Sure. All right. The floor is now yours, if you would like. For the public, if you could just state a little bit about this new committee that was formed, what your goal is and what you are going to be presenting this evening? I love it. Now, don't all speak up at...
Well, we are missing our chairperson, and we thought she was going to be doing the presenting, and we're not sure what happened. Basically, the word was put out that you were creating a new finance committee to review the budget, the finances, as they progress through the year, and to give any advice and thoughts that we might have that might be of help to the council for their consideration.
That sounds great. So what do you have for us this evening?
Thank you, Mayor, for the time you've given us. We have presented or we forwarded a presentation to the council.
And Kelly, could you put the presentation up there if you have that, please?
We have a minute, also.
Sure, if you all could introduce yourself.
Sure. Sure. My name is Randy Sotomayor.
Mike Gann.
Joe Norris.
And then you're missing Nicole.
Nicole Williams and Karen Brandt.
All right. Thank you so much. There it is.
Okay. So Counsel, thank you again for giving us the opportunity to share our thoughts and our inputs for the FY 2026 budget. We basically have three recommendations. After several weeks of reviewing the budget and having work sessions and also questions and answers, I would also like to thank Karina Larson for her dedicated work and quick response to our answers. It was great.
To our questions.
To our questions, correct. She is quite responsive to our needs. So thank you, Karina. Our first recommendation, I know that the council is considering a pension for the workers, and our first recommendation is to adopt a 457B Deferred Compensation Plan for all employees instead of funding the custom municipal pension for police officers and eligible public workers, employees. There are quite a few benefits for these 457B. One is to increase flexibility and control. Employees can gain greater control over their retirement savings, allowing for more personalized investment choices. Tax advantages. Contributions are made pre-tax dollars or reducing employees' current tax liability income. No early withdrawal penalties. Employees can access funds without facing penalties for early withdrawal, unlike many other retirement plans. Portability. Employees can easily transfer or roll over their 457 funds if they change jobs, offering better portability than many other retirement plans. And last is automatic contributions for police and public works. The town can choose to make an additional automatic percentage contribution for police and eligible public works employees, enhancing their retirement benefits. This is really not common, but it is available to the council to consider. Other key benefits for the town. Inclusivity. Unlike traditional pension plans, they may be limited to specific groups. The 457B plans are available to all employees. Lower administrative burden. The 457B plan places a significantly lower administrative and financial burden on the town compared to a custom-built pension plan. And reduce fiscal risk. The plan lowers the town's fiscal risk while ensuring better retirement security for employees. On the next slide, there are, in summary, a lot of the pros and cons to the 457B. And there we're highlighting not only the strengths and weaknesses, but also the opportunities and threats. One of the threats is a market downturn could devastate the retired savings, and the employee financial literacy gaps may lead to poor investment choices. That is pretty much a threat in any investment opportunity. Recommendation number two is to hire a dedicated project manager to manage town projects funded. We assessed through our conversations with the meetings that there is approximately $1.5 million in secured impending grant fundings for a new police station and Dorchester Community Center. Despite these valuable grants, four years of delayed implementation, no dedicated resource is managing implementation, and grant deadlines continue to approach. This is what we've learned. Meanwhile, additional projects from the latest comprehensive plan for 2020 remain incomplete. The cost of inaction. Without immediate action, La Plata faces complete loss of the $1.5 million in secured funding, reduced eligibility for future grants, and missed economic development opportunities. A dedicated project manager. Economic impact of successful implementation. Timely execution of these projects would deliver substantial benefits. Direct employment opportunities during construction, enhanced quality of life for residents, strengthened public safety infrastructure, community center programming opportunities, and a multiplier effect as project spending circulates through local economy. And we have Nicole. Nicole, thank you. Please.
Thank you.
We're now in recommendation three, and I'll turn it over to Nicole.
For recommendation three, what we're recommending is to postpone budgeting and funding the planned $90,000 land survey. Currently, there's no town planner in place to direct the survey specifications. There's risk of collecting data that may not fully support La Plata's specific needs. Also, the town planner would enhance the value of the land survey investment. Postponing offers financial advantages and ensures alignment with town objectives. And then also, effective urban development relies on collaboration between surveyors and planners. So those are the key reasons we're making that recommendation. So in conclusion, these recommendations really aim to enhance La Plata's financial stability, project management capabilities, and strategic planning. They represent a balanced approach to fiscal responsibility and also community development. And finally, the implementation will position La Plata for sustainable growth and improved service delivery.
I love how you just swooped in and finished that out. That is great. Thank you. Well, first of all, thank you and Karen for, the five of you, for really taking an interest in this and taking your time and going line by line and identifying the strengths and the weaknesses, the opportunities and the threats. I really appreciate that. I'm going to open it. Are you ready? Because we're going to open it up for questions. I'm going to open it up for questions from the dais to see if anybody has any questions. Do you want...
First of all, excuse me. Thanks. Thanks for the work, and I appreciate volunteering for this because I know it's an arduous... I'm sorry, ma'am, I didn't catch your name again.
It's Nicole Williams.
Thank you. So I do appreciate the effort. I'm a little biased because I'm the, I've been trying to get this $90,000 study for two years. So I'm saying I'm biased, and it's not a survey. It's hiring a consulting firm to do the study, and it's based upon about my 35 years as a land planner in the public and private sector, and I know consulting firms who do this work for a living. And at one time, the former town manager did provide us, at least provided me, and I think I sent it in the message earlier this year, I don't know whether you saw it, where there's a preliminary outline of what the request for proposal would be. And then I had discussed it with the former town planner before she left that they were going to try to tackle this, but that never happened. So I would urge that we would still consider it because, yes, it's a significant amount of money. You're absolutely correct. But I believe because of the growth that we've had and the constraints on our budget in terms of infrastructure, and in particularly how, and I assume we do, but frankly, I don't know that, whether, how we track maintenance costs, because that's the hidden cost that's going to hit us now and in the future. Because when the town takes over a road, we own it. And yeah, a road may last 10 years, 20 years. I don't know what it is, but I'm not sure we know what it costs the town of La Plata to maintain one lane mile of road, how many feet of sewer line, water line, stormwater management. So that's a cost that's out there that we don't know what that is yet. So this is trying to identify that cost, but also what different land uses generate different types of revenue. Because I've seen studies that single-family homes, I'm generalizing now, that are on half acre or one acre lot, they don't pay for themselves. That is, they generate more cost services versus the revenue they bring in taxes. We have a benefit here because we don't pay for schools. Charles County's budgets, half of it is schools. Okay, so we, that's a good for us. But even in our own comp plan, it says we have a problem by just thinking we're going to build our way out of our infrastructure problem, because in my view, we're not. So I had asked for this two years ago to kind of get ahead of the curve, so to speak. So, and again, I appreciate all the effort and the work, and so I just, I'm opposed to removing it. And then one final comment and question, because I did watch some of your sessions, and again, I appreciate that. And you made a great point in discussion about the comprehensive plan and the 2022 strategic plan or dockings upon which our budgeting should be based on. But yet again, and you made the point, we don't have metrics. We don't know where we are. We don't have a snapshot. And I agree with that. And so with all due respect, our budget, our current budget doesn't say that again. There are no metrics. Other than in this particular format, the budget, at least the draft budgets, do include some metrics from each department, you know, that they have a spreadsheet, five years of fiscal funding, which is great, and then they have some ratios, expenditures per capita or expenditures per residential unit. Those are great metrics, and so I think we ought to use those to tell the public that. But we don't. So I'm just very conflicted about our budget process. I'll be upfront and tell you that right now. I'm very conflicted by it. But having said all that, I do appreciate what you've done for us. And again, it is important to have another group of folks looking at this, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
And just if I could add a little bit more to this one since we're on recommendation three. I heard, if I heard this correctly, you recommended doing this with the strategic and with the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan so that it's all together. And that's what, I know we're in the middle of our comprehensive plan. This will hit the five years. And this may be a start to look at that, but without, as Councilman Jenkins said, without the metrics and all of that, I'm not sure how a land survey would coincide with that. We don't have that in place yet with the comprehensive plan, the strategic plan, and all of this. And you're right, with no town planner, it makes it very hard for someone to execute that. So I appreciate your insight on that. Does anybody have any comments on recommendation three since we're on this one? We'll just take it piecemeal on that, if that's okay.
So is it a timing issue or is it a dollar issue?
It's a timing issue.
The timing. So is there anything then that if we put it in the budget and we get a planner in June, that money's then available for them to implement it once they start in September? Or to me, that would be a, because if we don't put it in, then it's, and we hire a planner, and the planner says, I need money to do, I mean, we can always, I guess, add it in after the fact, but I don't know. I just wanted to make sure that what, it was a timing, not a, it wasn't the 90,000 that was bothering you. It was the timing of...
It was absolutely the timing of it. And I think what we were looking at is if, if it's feasible, right, that, hey, we were able to get a city planner or a town planner by June, then maybe that would make sense to keep it in there, but just not tying up that money, right, for this fiscal year if that's not something that we think is going to happen.
Okay, that's fair enough.
Do you have any comments? Councilman Trolinger on this one?
I have some general comments, but I will say, nice to meet you, Ms. Williams. Nice to meet you, Mr. Sotomayor. Good to see you again, Mr. Gann. Thank you for your impact in our community and our theater as well. And thank you, Mr. Norris, for your past service to the town. I know it takes a lot to spend all of your times outside of your, your business and community events that you have just to help the town take a second look. I think generally, I guess, just to, and I know, Ms. Williams, that your crew did a great job before you arrived, but just to understand the general scope of what you all looked at as your points of data and the overall questions that you were tackling for our budget process, if you could just explain that briefly.
Sure. So we were looking at, we, we had several sessions related to the operations budget and also the general fund budget. And so obviously, right now, we're focused on the operations budget. So we use that, we use our past experience in public works, whether it be at the federal level or the municipal level or even the state level. I think that's something that we all bring to the table, accounting experience, and additional research that we did to augment that.
And I think Mr. Sotomayor noted that you guys had had the budget. You had reviewed it for a couple of weeks.
We have.
When about did you end up getting the budget from the town?
So we got several iterations, multiple iterations of it. So we reviewed each of them as it's kind of, as, as, you know, what the projected amount was, then as the numbers started coming in and the justifications around those. So we did look at all of that, and we reviewed it pretty, pretty detailed.
Okay. Okay, so just to echo on this particular point as to recommendation three, just follow-up question from Councilman Winkler. Is there a, there's, there's no problem with the survey itself. It's just implementation to marry it to our comp plan and the goals and vision of La Plata?
Just to make sure it gets executed in the way that the town would want it to get executed, right? That the surveyor and the planner are hand in hand, because what happens sometimes, and I'm very familiar with consulting firms. I worked for one. So what happens sometimes is consultants, that there's not somebody that's there within day in and day out that has the strategic objectives in mind, it can go astray, right? And they could be looking at things that really aren't in scope, so it's really making sure that they're doing the things that the town wants them to do.
Ms. Minor, is there an update as to our town planner search at all? Okay. Understood. And, yes, Mr. Norris.
One of the things that was in the back of my mind, I don't know if it was with the other people on the committee, but that the helpful new planner is going to need a little time to get acclimated to the town and, you know, and the town needs and whatever. So it wasn't like if you were hiring them in June that they're going to be ready to do their best job on this project. So that was one of the things in back of my mind that I thought was a good reason to postpone it, not, not to kill it, but to have come in the proper time.
Thank you, Ms. Norris.
All right. Any other comments on recommendation three? All right. Thank you. We will go, let's flip back to recommendation, we'll just go back. So that's what we're doing. Recommendation two, right there about a project manager. And I do not disagree with... And I do not disagree with this one iota. And I will start off on this one. You are so right. You were able to look at our budget, look at the wonderful things that we have planned for the future of our town. And that one hole is missing that, as you have said, even in recommendation three, missing a key member of the team to implement that. That is the same here. We've got not, in addition to the police station and to the DCC, we also have Will's Park where we're building an amphitheater and we have all of these other little projects that need to be managed. So I appreciate very much that you have identified that as one of areas that we could enhance the way that the town is operating. Anybody else have, I'll go straight down. Do you have any questions or on the recommendation two?
I, I agree.
I agree wholeheartedly. I think that you have to have oversight. You have to have somebody to, to keep an eye on, on dotting the i's and crossing the t's. I guess my question for this is, was this looked at as part of your overall budgeting process and, and factored in like, okay, we've budgeted X amount of dollars for a project manager? And, and the, and the, you know, support material or support staff to, to go along with it for this, for this new project manager we'll call.
So I think the way that we looked at it was that you have part of the funding through the grants, right? There's timelines that are associated with the grants. The scope of the grants allows for a project manager. So the grants would absorb that cost. You could take a few different ways doing it. You could do a 1099, you could do a permanent employee, you know? There's a myriad of ways that you could get there until you had that budget put aside for, if you decided that's what you wanted to do, a permanent project manager, which seems like it would make sense in time, but you could use that as the grants as a proof of concept if you wanted to.
So then what you're saying is that it, it really has, by taking, utilizing the funds included in the grant, it doesn't have a negative or a positive effect on the budget one way or the other. Because you're using the grant itself to fund the position to, to, you know, to, to, to work it through, so to speak.
Exactly.
Trying to get the job done.
Yeah.
Right. That's the big one. Thank you.
If I might add a comment there, my experience on the planning mission spanned two comprehensive plans. And I remember the second one during the discussions, raising the comment that we're essentially committing the town to doing a lot of things. How are we going to make sure that they get done? And this is an example, but I know the recommendation here is talking about the grant money that's in place for special projects. But the existing comprehensive plan already has a number of things in place that we probably are not in a position to just load that on our current staff. So, and I would connect that to the recommendation three. The, the whole idea there is to make sure that you've got someone in place who can manage this project or someone who likely is not an employee, does, is not fully familiar with what we do, depend upon someone we have here to do that. Thank you.
Councilman Challenger?
Yes. I think a couple of points that you just made there are vital for the town. I think it's vital for the leadership of the town and I think the general idea of accountability to the comprehensive plan and to the funds that have been allocated to the town is, is extremely important. In looking at a project manager, knowing that we have a number of positions that are crucial for our town right now that are unfilled. Biggest one, town manager, it's in the process of being filled. Secretary, we, not close behind is our, what we just talked about, town planner. We have a number of positions that have undergone changes over the last year. Is any of that a factor in looking at this from the bird's eye view? Whereas if we had a stable leadership structure as it related to town manager or town planner, et cetera, would that ameliorate some of the risk factors presented?
I think it would depend on the scope of their duties, right? I mean, if they're, if, if their plate is so full, you know, they're going to have a hard time managing all these individual projects. And given the number of projects that there are, you know, at some point, it may make more sense to have more than one project manager, right? It seems like there's quite a few projects. What I would say is, is I don't think it impacts your hiring, depending on what mechanism you use to hire the person. So we talked about, you know, you could contract them out so they could already work for a contractor, right? There's, there's firms that do this all day, every day, right? You could do a 1099. So these would essentially potentially be people that already have a job, already own a business, things like that, and, and wouldn't necessarily be looking for, you know, permanent employment through, through the town. So I think it just depends on the mechanism that you use.
And I think Councilman Challenger brought up a good point about making sure that we have somebody in place to manage these grants. These grants were all earned or granted prior to 2024 and no one managed them. In fact, tomorrow I'm going up to beg that they don't claw back one of our large grants because it was never managed by, and we did have full staff then. It was one of those things that just fell through the cracks. We had a planner, we had a town manager. And that is, we just signed on with a public service agreement last week with Wood Valley Community Strategies. So just as you have said, that someone who may be managing one project and he is going to be managing the bike trail is capable of managing others and they are contractors out. So that is a, a good thing that contractors, we don't have to pay them benefits and we still get all of the perks from that. So thank you for that.
I would strongly encourage you to use that in your discussion. I said tomorrow later.
Oh, yeah.
Because as Nicole said, you know, a 1099 would be beneficial to us financially. But as Joe said, it'll help get the job done.
Exactly.
If we can, if you can demonstrate that to the group that allows to have the money, we're going to have this project manager in place or reasonably spend the money and get the job done.
Thank you very much. I can use all the talking advice from four very, very smart individuals. Councilman Jenkins, do you have any thing to say about recommendation two?
Thank you. And again, this, this is a good, obviously a good catch. So this is important and I appreciate you highlighting this. Just a couple of clarification questions. So you, at the, one of the, the slide, it says a, you have, you say additional project from the latest comp plan 2020. So, so did you look at our CIP, our past CIPs or the current proposed CIP as well, I would assume? Okay. And then you looked at the ARPA list? On the Fed?
Yes.
American Rescue Plan. Okay. And then interesting comment you made on the cost of inaction, which is, one bullet says miss economic development opportunities. What do you mean by that?
So what happens, right? If you don't meet certain milestones within a grant, just as the mayor suggested, they'll take the money back, right? So, and then what happens is over time, you put yourself in a position where you're less likely to get grants because you have, you don't have a, you, you haven't shown that you're going to spend them in a way that you said.
Thank you. And then this is a clarification. So when you say a project manager, you mean an overall person or you have project managers for each particular project or grant? Just like I said, a little clarification on what that means.
So it all depends on the size of the project, right? So.
Okay. Thank you.
I think an important point there is the grant oral could cover plural.
Yes, I agree. And I think the mayor pointed that out. The one, one contractor.
Just one more comment to your previous point about economic development. If you get the project working, that's putting workers right here in the field in our town. That's got to be beneficial.
Yes. Thank you.
And each of the contractors probably will have their own expertise, you know? Jamie with transportation, you will probably have someone that is well versed in building a police station or a community center, those kind of expertise on that. All right. Thank you very much. Solid recommendation. And I will let you know how it goes tomorrow. And then we go to the first one with recommendation for a 457 B deferred compensation plan versus the enhanced pension plan that was, is currently being designed. So I will start down with Councilman Winkler.
How did you kind of walk us through your? I think everybody kind of knows where I, I, I stand on it, but I'm just curious as to how you came to the conclusion or how you drew to the 457 as the overall or overarching solution to our dilemma?
So I think what we saw in the 457 was all the, all the benefits that Randy spoke about to both the employees in the town. The thing around the pensions, right, is if you look at the national average, there's like 1.5 trillion dollars out there in debt from, from pensions that they don't know how, states and municipalities don't know how they're going to afford that, right? So it really, it, it puts a town, especially a small town, in a place of potential financial instability, right? So we looked at other things that have been used in other municipalities, other towns, other places that have worked. And the 457 is one that has, that has worked. And it has actually been trending in, in different places from transitioning from a pension to a 457, just because of the financial instability that it creates. So when you look at those benefits, plus, you know, trying to balance, you know, the, the financial stability of the, of the town, I think that was the solution that we saw to make the most sense. And still be providing additional coverage for the employee. I mean, I think when we look at the, you know, the, the primary weakness, in my opinion, with the 457 is the financial literacy and, you know, potentially with certain employees, making sure that they're making sound investments. But I think we saw opportunities for the town to sort of offset those, either through, you know, financial literacy training, also focusing in on, you know, sort of the right investments. So making that pick helping make that pick upfront so that, you know, an employee can't go and invest in something that's super risky or, you know, so sort of kind of putting some firewalls around that.
Okay. Does it? In, in your estimation, does it solve, you know, the, the biggest issue was that, that the police officers, that for the last seven years, they've been going after. Does it solve their issue or meet their, their need of getting them to where they feel they need to be from a retirement standpoint? Because I think that's where, that's the, the whole reason we got where we are is the desire, which we all were in agreement of, the desire to, to meet the police officers to where they need to be to, to, for their retirement needs. Does this meet them at their, at their level?
I think it meets them and I think it exceeds what they wanted. It, it exceeds that for the town as a whole, right? Because it's inclusive of everyone. It doesn't put as much financial risk on the town. The employee has more. They, they can invest in the things that they want to within, you know, certain limitations that the town puts in place. So they feel like they have more control over those investments. They can also put, you know, additional money in there. So it, it reduces their overall, you know, taxes as well. So I think there's a lot of advantage, advantages to it. And I think if you looked not only at municipalities, but also corporations, again, there's this going away from a pension to a 457 or something similar to that, right? Just because of the instability that, that pensions can cause and have shown to cause.
You're welcome. Councilman Challenger?
Yes. Did you receive any input or feedback from any of the department heads or was any sought? For example, the police department or public works department?
No.
You mean as a committee?
Yes.
No.
No.
We're, we're looking at the budget.
Okay.
It, it's.
Fair.
I don't think it's our view to.
Whereas.
Dealing with the departments in that respect.
And I ask because I think Councilman Winkler asked the big question of, is this, is this better as this? Does this meet the needs of a department? But that doesn't necessarily concern you as a committee as much as it is dollars and cents for the town.
As much as trying to help the town be solvent and stay, if, if I may, one of the things that really, and it wasn't the only factor, but one of the things that really concerned me, I don't, USI, your consulting group, I went back and looked at their report. And I'd challenge you all to take another look at it. And I don't know anything about USI, how competent they are, whatever, but you almost thought they were or you wouldn't hire them to start with. But out of a, if you look at the challenges that, that they talk about, three pages worth. It is, to me, it's a little bit scary to think our municipality would be taking on the responsibility of a pension plan of that type that's got to be tied in where there's, I don't think, I don't know if anything else around like it. And that frightened me, quite frankly. And if we, you know, maybe if you get more knowledge in the future, maybe we'd look at, you know, I'd personally look at it differently, but it, it really was a, a brave thing that you all were trying to do as far as I was concerned.
Research, right? And when you look for, for towns that have a secondary budget outside of what the state does, there's really no data on that.
Well, I did want to follow up with that. So I've got the PowerPoint slides, which we got at the time of the meeting. And I would like to look into the research more that you guys have kind of dove into. Is that something that you can make available through Ms. Minor, that she can get that to us? Because as I understand it, there are quite a few municipalities that do have benefits available for their police departments. It's, it's, it's a different application when we try to include more staff, like public works. But the idea of police officers having an early retirement is not new. And the fact is, there are municipalities that are still doing that and still joining state retirement plans that are specific to police departments. And so I would be curious to look at the data that you've seen that municipalities as a whole are moving away versus some of the data that I've seen that say, well, actually, towns just like ours are enrolling in state retirement benefits for their police departments. So I'd like to match that up. You guys have done a lot of work on it. So I want to check my math too. So thanks in advance for providing that.
If I could add something to that, you were given the task that with USI, I think where Councilman Challenger has forgotten is this council as a majority included public works in it. And that is where we come up with. Public Works in it, and that is where we come up with a very difficult way to find a, you know, to take this concept and try to make it into a pension. And that's where we're getting stopped. Many, many municipalities have an enhanced police benefits to it, but they don't have enhanced police and public works. And that's what the council had decided last year that we were moving forward on it, and that's what we're stuck on. If we unravel it, I think that's a whole different story. But as we, as you were presented with USI and trying to create that, that's what you said, Mr. Norris, that that's kind of a scary thing because it hasn't been done. So that's just a point of clarification.
Okay.
And I didn't, I didn't forget, that's what I was saying, was that was what the difference was. And that's part of the challenge that you were grappling with.
Yeah, and and when we share the research, there's there's a lot of recent case studies in there of of towns that, much larger towns, that are really being challenged right now with pensions and what that's doing to the town and what they're, and I think some of the, when we did look at the budget and and sort of the the proposal and what the expected contribution rate was going to have to be for the town, we thought that looked low. And what we're seeing from a national average, right, for state and municipalities, is that employers are contributing now up to 38%. So it's a lot higher than what's anticipated, and I think that's part of the financial risk that we're talking about here. But again, we'll provide you with that information.
Thank you. And Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you. Councilman, the previous question kind of answered some of my questions, but I did want to make one clarification. I don't believe we've hired you as I did. I mean, they made a presentation to us, so we haven't signed a contract with anybody.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that's clear on the record.
Okay, I didn't.
I I understand, but I want to make sure, because I didn't vote for that, and I don't think we ever did that. So I understand that. And just to follow up what Councilman Challenger talked about, so, and hopefully you can provide it, but so what information, what reports were provided to you with respect to the pension process? I mean, can you provide or can you just summarize what you received from staff?
We received the 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 briefing that was provide provided.
From USI?
From USI.
Okay.
And then we did a lot of independent research around this sort of process, what other municipalities and states were doing, what was going on within the 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 U.S. as it relates to pensions and 407Bs, what are the risks, right? So that's really how we we put this together.
And did you receive any information from the previous work that the councils done over the last two and a half years to, like the Bolton Report and those background materials? Did you receive any of that at all?
I don't believe so.
Okay. And you probably don't know this, and I'm not sure I do. I I'm not sure what the participation rate today or last year was for the 457 plan at one time. We got that number, and I'm not sure, I don't want to endanger myself by saying what I remember what it was, but I I was curious to know what it is now. You probably don't know that, but that's something to look at, too. Thank you.
First of all, I think we agree that there is a place to make sure that the Police Department, certain areas of the Public Works, receive additional retirement benefits because of the hazardous of their job. So I wanted to make sure that you weren't thinking otherwise on that. The one thought that I continue to bring up in our discussions was on the financial risk to the the town. Imagine a person who's working for the Police Department retires at age 45, because he or she is allowed to, and we had this pension in place, that person might live to be 100. That is a huge, huge task for a town to take on. So the idea of the 457 was strong on our minds because that's a proven program that's out there, you know, for anyone to take advantage of. And but to Nicole's point and to Councilman Jenkins' point, participation rate, a lot of young people don't like to participate in retirement plans. We need to educate educate them, because more and more companies, as Nicole said, are not using pension plans anymore. We need to get employees to recognize that they have to participate in their own retirement plan. So in this case, we could use a 457. Additional contribution from the town could go in there to help the Police Department, and then we could continue to educate them without having the risk of having our pension plan go default, because 100 years from now, we've got 1,000 employees that we're still paying them retirements for. Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right. I appreciate your recommendations, and we will take them into consideration when balancing or passing a budget that includes, doesn't include all of those good things on there. But thank you, and and I can't tell you how much I really appreciate all of your hard, hard work with that. And I'm so glad I'm not you guys. You guys have really geeked out on that, and it was awesome. So thank you, I appreciate that. I'm sure there'll be more questions and and just one budget down for you guys now. Right? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is our budget discussion. Well, that was such a great lead in Finance Committee that that and your recommendations. We are going in with Ms. Larson, come on up. Thank you for your very thorough reports, and I'm going to have you just tell counsel the two different reports, one with the pension, one with the 457, any, I'm going to have you go through your, as we have done in the past, through your memo and go from there.
Okay, so I was requested to do two budgets, one with the proposed pension that the town's been looking at, and one with a proposed 457 contribution with an enhanced contribution for the Public Works and PD. Revenues were pretty much the same, except in the pension budget, because we do need to use fund balance to cover the costs associated with the buy-in of the pension. The revenues are higher for that reason. The expenses were higher because of mainly the buy-in and the administration costs for the pension. I put in $170,000 for administration and building the pension. That could still be underestimated based on the information. We don't have any hard numbers because we haven't hired anybody to actually create this one yet. The 457, that is, that has a 3% town matching contribution to all employees, and then an additional 2% contribution to Public Works and PD without any matching. I'm really, I guess, which budget do you want to start with talking about?
Let's start with the pension one, since that's the one that was brought up first.
Well, in the memo, and basically both the memos are pretty much similar. We have separated out the capital from the operating, so this is just for operating activities. The capital budget we're currently working on, we're supposed to have those worksheets from the departments by the end of this month, so we can start building on that. Also, we attempted to implement a target-based budget where we looked at, okay, any of these operating costs for the departments to not exceed 2% of what was budgeted last year, and most departments actually went below that when they actually evaluated and list out what their contracted services are, how much they're really spending on uniforms, evaluating their overtime. So most of them were able to really look at their budget and understand these, this is my plan, instead of just giving us a number and saying this is what we need based on historic. This budget does include a 2.23% COLA. This calculation is the same calculation we have been using for the past 14 years. Last year, we used that calculation, and it was, I want to say, like a 3.7, I'm sorry, I can't remember, but we reduced it down due to budget constraints with the pension. Benefits, we have not gotten the numbers, but 6% seems to be the average increase. Some of the challenges are the water agreement. So right now, we are accepting applications for approved developments, but we're not approving any more developments. So until we get a agreement in place, that is limiting the projection that I'm doing because I'm not sure what's going to happen. I don't know. The other thing is the opera funds. We have utilized all those opera funds. We had allocated over $660,000 for operating costs, and we are using up those in this budget. There's 80, I think, $88,000 in here for operating costs for IT, for the website. So those are going to be used up in here. The rest of that was for capital and would be reflected in the capital budget if those projects come up in that budget. So for the revenues, projected revenues are 14.1 million. Of that, 12.3 are actually unrestricted from taxes. They don't, they're not from the special taxes, and they're not from fund balance. Projected expenses are 14.1, and that's part of that is because we unbalanced it with the fun, unassigned fund balance. 12.6 is really unrestricted. That means it's not connected to any specific activity, and that's a 2.9% increase from last year. Rural property tax, it's estimated to increase 8.7%. Those estimates do include new developments. The state does report, does include new developments for all permits that have been issued. The heritage green tax is increasing mainly because of the bonds that we have to cover, and we collect those taxes. I will note that I have not gotten the report from Munich, Munich Cap, so those numbers could change there to get me that report by the end of this month. Income taxes are projected to go down, and part of that reason is because in the amounts that we received last year for FY24, it was, there were fiduciary filings, which were for estates and trusts. That is unpredictable, and that amount actually decreased significantly, almost $300,000. So in my number, it really only accounts for the tax revenue that we collect from actual earnings. That has been increasing an average of just under 6% over the last four years, so that reflects in this number. Licenses and permits. I'm doing a decrease only because without a water agreement, it's uncertain how many more we're going to be issuing. Service charges, that is increasing, but that's because, based on the trends that I'm seeing, we actually under budgeted last year. We should have budgeted a little bit more, so I wanted to make sure we capture that in this year. There is the fines and tortures. I included the photo enforcement cameras. We're 180,000 is about the average that we're receiving now. We are collecting 76.2% of the tickets that are being issued. Investment revenue, it is increasing, but only because I didn't, the projection was lower in FY25, but with this projection, I'm taking what we have as of FY20, end of FY24, doing a 3% rate of return the first half of the year and a two and a half rate of return the second half of the year. Project revenues, those, that's the, for the IT, which is our finance system, our website, and there was something else in there. Auditing services, we still have funds for the auditing services. And then unassigned fund balance is 379,000, and that allocation is all set by the 500,000 that needs to be for the startup cost of the pension. And if we were to start all employees July 1st in the pension and not, I guess, grandfather them in, we wouldn't have that half a million dollar buy-in, and then there would be a surplus of 120,000. The general government expenditures, they're increasing slightly, 1.8%. Again, you'll see a lot of them, there's very slight increases, most of it's because of the salaries, because there was the 2.23% COLA. But in this case, the general government is also decreasing because we don't have the election, so that item, budget item's not in there. And also, the, there was, I believe, 21,000 for postage and delivery that we used to just throw in the general services, but we can actually allocate that out, so we've put that to the departments that are actually using. And of course, that's all set by the land use study that's in there. Public safety, they're increasing 8.8%. The majority of that is driven by the enhanced pension plan, but also the photo enforcement, which do have some offsetting costs with the revenues that are collected. Public Works is decreasing 9.2%, and that is mainly for the reallocation or reorganization of the Public Works, so it did decrease the salaries and benefits. There's also a decrease in the contracted services, but an increase in supplies and materials for in-house maintenance and repair. Parks and recreations, they're decreasing 3.7%, and that's mainly to contracted services. That's actually because contracted services were inflated in the last budget. And then we have our debt service for the two bonds, the 2009 bonds and the 2023 bonds. I'm, was there something you guys want to specifically talk about each of these?
Thank you very much. Let me open it to counsel to begin to see what questions they have. Thank you for the very thorough report and analyzing each and every area there and justifying the increase, the decrease. I appreciate that. Councilman Winkler, do you have any questions on what Ms. Larson just went over?
No, just, you know, from Councilman, we all kind of ask some questions off, right? You know, with the, my question regarding some of the disparities or some of the numbers are actually coming from where they're. The backstory of the law is there. This, this budget with the pension is balanced without dipping into the fund balance?
No, it's not.
And that's okay. And that's, that's my only, my only concern, because as you have alluded to, that our revenue stream from fund balances, from investment income, et cetera, is not going to always be there.
The other thing you ought to consider is both these operating budgets are using the majority, pretty much all of the revenue that's coming in, so now we still have a capital budget that we have to do. That's going to come from fund balance.
All right. Councilman Challenger?
Thank you for putting this together and for your memo. Follow-up question from Councilman Winkler. We, have we balanced our budget with fund balance in the past?
We have, and matter of fact, we've done it for probably eight years, and the only thing that has saved us through these last three years is the interest, the investment earnings that we have received, because it has been over $1 million.
She said at least the last eight years.
And it has been, I think, like four years ago, we dipped into fund balance. And it has been, I think like four years ago, we dipped into fund balance. But if you look at FY '24, FY '23, this one, the investment earnings are really what's preventing us from dipping into the fund balance.
Okay. That was my question, the difference between then and now. Cause I recall, I think Councilwoman Bryant Ward asking some questions about that in the past, just from our prior work sessions on the budgets, was that this is kind of a thing that we had been doing at the same time, there were no increases to the residents at all throughout that time, but we would dip into fund balance.
Yeah, well, we were budgeted to dip them to fund balance. But like I said, because we've received almost one and a half million in FY '24, if we didn't receive that, we would be going into fund balance for a little less than a million.
Okay, that, that makes sense. I appreciate that.
Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you for the report and the, and the work. I know this is a lot of stuff. And I also forwarded some questions to the finance director as well as the council. And I just wanted to highlight some of those real quick. So where is the foundry contract lodged?
It's in the general services. It's, it's 35,000, I believe.
That's an annual cost?
Yes, that's an annual.
And not to get in the weeds, but I'm, I'm just curious, do they have deliverables? Will they have benchmarks they have to give in, in the contract or not?
That would be a question for the department head and that would be in the administration department. So I know we've been talking about these deliverables and stuff. And the one thing I want to point out is the budgets before this, we just took what the departments gave us. There was no analysis, there was no evaluation, there was nothing. This year, we actually asked them to have take the, tell me what you have in this number. Don't just give me 50,000, say that's what it is. Tell me what you're going to use it for. So these departments have, they did a lot of work trying to get this and really putting a budget together that reflects their true operations. So that's the first step. We really didn't have a very good baseline. This budget will give us a good baseline. Then we can build up maybe next budget, be able to start evaluating these metrics and using this baseline and see how we do and what we're doing right and being able to do that analysis. But when we're starting at zero, trying to ask for all that. And I, I did ask for all of it and realized that I was asking way too much of these departments.
And that's a valid and important point. I guess I'm just still concerned about not only this one, but again, we have contracts. And to be very frank about it, it's not your, your doing. I have never seen any of their products, or if I did, I don't know what it was. So I just concerned, and that's something, and that's a big, a big amount of money. But, but yet we have comments that we don't do enough outreach and that's what they're supposed to do, I guess. And so I don't see any benefits of what we're, what we're using them for, to be blunt about it.
And that would be an
Who, who's that?
I, I answered your question earlier. I don't know, did the answers go?
I did not send it out.
No, I didn't, no, I haven't.
Cause I answered.
Okay, I haven't seen it, so.
Foundry, who was, who was Van Eppen is now foundry, is on a project basis. So there's really not any metrics and they've done quite a, quite a bit for us. We have public relations things out there. The, the map for the, the recycling and the yard waste, that was a big one. And their, their project is on an as needed basis.
Okay.
Project lifesaver, their video was a big one.
Video, yeah.
Thank you. I'm assuming the Dorchester is in the CIP.
Correct.
And you mentioned water agreement, I get it. Probably not your question to try to answer, but I know at one time, and it may be dated, there was a development spreadsheet that had all the projects and what they generated and yada, yada, yada. So that's not valid anymore?
I do not have that. I actually, when I answered your questions and sent them, I was like, I have no idea what this is. We, this would be a planning question.
Okay, but I, I guess I'm just suggesting that at one time I found to be a useful document. So I'm just curious why, why we never updated or kept it. I just
I did ask when I was putting this budget together to get an idea of how many approved developments were. So I have a projection of
Sure, exactly. And you may have alluded to this on page five. You mentioned public safety and enhanced pension. Is that the one that we're trying to do?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I'm just definition, I'm just trying to get clarifications.
Yes.
Okay. Page five and six, all that whole page, you talk about full-time employees, all that list. So this is a question for the council to answer, not me and maybe not you. But I know in 2022, I believe we did a staffing analysis.
Yeah.
Wait, wait, just let me finish, please. So, and I understand the need to kind of understand where we are. But are we going to have a problem of not having staff to deliver services? That's something we need to think about. I'm just, you can't answer it. I don't expect
Actually, I was gonna just say that no department requested other than public works for additional staff.
Okay. Page 39, it, on the planning, it talks about Main Street initiatives. I, I'm not sure what that means anymore.
I'm not sure what that means. I did not write up those descriptions or those goals. Those were from the departments.
Okay. We already talked about the, not the land use survey, land use fiscal analysis report, the 90K. So I won't go back there again. Page 49, budget on, on the police is, is 159,000 is included in this budget for creating a planned document. But yeah, and later on, there's a $500,000 cost. So I, I don't understand those two different numbers.
There's the 500,000, which is the initial funding to, I guess grandfather in to start the employees in this plan from the date that they were originally hired. And then there's the building, creating the plan. And then there's the cost of administrating the plan.
And those, and the source of that data is from who?
Well, I used what USI had provided and guesstimate on, based on what they said we needed. And that could, I could be under budgeting because we don't have a contract with anybody to tell us what it's going to cost.
And then finally, page 76, is a reference to public streets. Are we still going to be able to access HUR funds from the state?
HUR will be in the capital improvement plan.
Right, and do you, I'll ask that question then, okay? And then just a generalized comment for both budgets. Do we have a plan that we're gonna do outreach to the public about these budgets other than just a notice about a public hearing?
Well, it will go on to the website. I also
And what we're reviewing?
I wouldn't put the drafts up because this is for you guys. I mean, unless you want me to.
Well, no, I'm just asking.
To do one, the draft that you guys want to move forward with.
Well, I, I, I don't, I guess my question and maybe it's the last time we did this, we got hammered and rightly so because we didn't do much of an outreach. That's my opinion, okay, one view. And I'm only just suggesting that some way we need to advertise to the, to the public. Oh, by the way, we're reviewing the budget. And so they already know what the budget calendar review counts, so we're on track for that. But by the time we get to the public hearing, we, we should have something that they can look at. So if and when they come to the public hearing, whether they come here in person, they see it online or they watch it on YouTube, they can ask questions and they have some information about it. That, that's all I'm suggesting.
Yeah, I mean, it will be available to them for their comments. I mean, it's always been online for them, but right.
Everybody knows that, that's what I'm trying to make, I guess. And then, and then all right, well, I'll come back to that one. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes. Page 31, I did want to ask you, there's, there's an $18,000 allocation for gym membership for all employees. Can you talk to us about that? Or perhaps Ms. Kennedy can?
Yeah, one of the initiatives that we're working on for this year is I have reached out to three different local gyms. And we are trying to create a policy and a plan to do reimbursement. Because I, our police department had initially tried to put in an onsite gym for their staff. And after reaching out to Legit and our risk management, they told us that our policies don't cover the risk that would be involved in having our own equipment. So then the alternative was to go out and find the gyms that we could partner with and offer to pay at least all, if not most of a gym membership for the employees so that they could pick which kind of gym they want to go to, when they want to go to it. The hours are different, the benefits are different at the various different gyms. So we put it in the budget so that all employees can benefit it, not just the, the thing. And so the, the money came from $20 per person, assuming if all employees signed up times a year, a year's worth of membership.
Okay, so the three gyms were on board with that?
Yeah, we've already talked to all of them. They've all, they've all given us a corporate price. And one of the gyms has actually given us an option for maybe like a free month for people when they initially sign up. And then that would include also giving a discount to their family members, even though we would only reimburse the employee themselves.
All right, and how would the reimbursement work?
They would provide a copy of their invoice, just like they would with our tuition reimbursement, where they provide the invoice. And then for the gyms, they would show us some kind of usage to so that they are actually going. And we're still hashing out how many times we're going to require, whether it's four times a month or eight times a month. And then once they provide that information, we, we provide reimbursement through payroll.
Okay, thank you for the insight. While you're up here, can you talk to us about the unneeded licenses that, the $34,000 reduction on that?
I can talk about it. So like I said, we had employee, every department head list what they needed. Well, when they list what they needed, that cost wasn't included in that listing. So we obviously had something in the budget that's not needed. And that's where it came from. It was under that category.
Okay, is there a type of, can you give me examples of type licenses?
Unfortunately, we didn't require the departments to actually explain what they needed in what their requests. And that's part of the reasons why these budgets, I could not go back and say what's really happening compared to the budget, compared to what happened, because I didn't have that detail. And so this year, we asked for that detail. And that way I can see, okay, this is what you planned, this is the contractor you're planning for. Even if they didn't have a contract, if this was the services you needed and this is the cost. So when we did all that, it ended up that we over budgeted, just like many of the other departments were over budgeted.
Okay, and following page, and, and Ms. Kennedy, you probably won't be able to answer any of this stuff. But the, as it relates to the planning department description, I know it's a general description of what the department does, but it refers to the APFO. I've, we, in recent meetings, we, I think council heard there, we've heard there was a draft. We've heard there is one, we haven't received one. This refers to one. I was just looking for clarification on that.
Unfortunately, I took the descriptions that were from last budget and asked the department heads to update them. I would have to refer to
We didn't have on last year's budget.
Well, you guys didn't have the description, but when I did the budget book, if you go back to the budget book, there are descriptions and goals in there that was submitted for the budget award. That's what I used and asked all departments to update it.
I understand. I was just clarifying that I didn't miss a
Unfortunately, I, I left the descriptions and the goals to the departments to prepare.
Okay, no problem. I get it. All right, thanks. Thanks, Madam.
Any other? And then could you just touch upon, since you did the one with the dipping into $500,000 into the fund balance in order to, for unassigned fund balance for the pension, just the 457, since you have that here and they're identical except for that one line item, I believe, on that. And if you could just go over that. Just saying that what the differences, so if I heard you correctly, when, when you said the pension, if it starts from day one, July 1st, and offering the pension, that would actually, with the pension that is going to be designed, that would actually yield us a surplus of 120,000. So now we back everything out and we offer the 457 matching. What does that do to the budget?
Well, that would go to the other budget. So with the 457, we would not use unassigned fund balance. And I believe I also stated in here somewhere, if we remove the 457, so we would have a surplus of 90,000 if we did a 457 over the pension. But if we remove the benefits, all benefits for now, you would actually, there would be a surplus of 288,000.
So with the 457, that's enabling legislation. So I, as an employee, Jane Smith, I don't want to invest in a 457. You are, I have to participate in order for it to be matched or any of that, correct?
In this budget, all employees would have to participate to get the 3% match. Public Works and PD would automatically get a 2%, no match.
But they have to put something in.
Well, they would have, no.
So you're doing 2% of their budget automatically?
Yeah.
Their pay, I'm sorry, automatically?
Yeah, the 3% they would match. So if the employee did, if a police officer did the 3% match and they got the 2%, it would be an 8% between the employer and the employee, 3% from the employee and 5% from the town.
And the other thing is currently all employees pay into the Maryland State Pension Plan and it's seven and a half percent?
Right now, employees pay 7%. The towns portion fluctuate, well, I wouldn't say fluctuate, it continues to increase. We're close to 12% now, the town's contribution. That does not include the administrative fees, but the administrative fees are probably like 20,000 a year.
Okay, okay. So with this enhanced 457, they are putting in, they could get up to 5%, an additional 5% the employees, so.
If the police, if they participate and do the 3% matching, they would get 5% from the town. And all of the employees would have to do a 3% matching. They would have to put 3% to get 3% from the town.
So 5% for the enhanced, 7%, which makes it, you said it was 12% for the pension?
The employees portion, they had, for the Maryland State, they pay in 7%. To get 5% from the town, they would have to contribute 3%, which would be a total 10% from their pay.
Okay, that's what I was thinking about, but you're, you're the brilliant one there with all the math on that. All right, any other, or any questions from the dais here on this?
So as I understand it, and just correct me if I'm wrong. So if the current retirement plan that is in place was left untouched, either because of the lengthy period of time it's going to take to create a plan as has been indicated to us and by you, let's, let's just say, for example, the pension plan, it may not be operable in year one, even if you hire a consulting group to do it, because they're going to have to do the studies, they're going to have to do everything else. If, if everything remained as it is, the surplus is 288075, is that?
Correct, if we don't add any extra benefits.
Okay, and what is that? What is our surplus based on generally? Does this include the increase that town council passed as well as the investments that you referred to previously as to why we aren't dipping into fund balance?
Well, eventually those investment earnings are going to go down. Right now, are we historically have never had this much in investment earnings. We historically get maybe 200 or 300,000. There's been one year we only got 20,000. It was 19,000 that we got. So it's not something we should be relying on year over year in balancing our budget. In this budget, it, I believe I put 600, sorry. I believe I put 600,000, something in here. But we should not be relying on it to balance our budget. It's, it's kind of like the income tax and that income tax that we get from trusts and estates. We definitely should not be relying on that. That fluctuates, there's been years that we only got 30,000 and then we got a year that we got almost 600,000. Let me see where I put the investments. So in this budget, So in this budget, I, I put almost six hundred and forty thousand for the investment. And that's based on our ending, um, cash balance, um, as of FY twenty-four.
Okay, um, and then one, uh, other question, just generally affects both budgets, but as we were talking about the land use study, um, this, that project had been allocated on two other prior budgets?
Yes.
And not, um, we didn't, we didn't get a chance to go forward with that. Okay, um, that's it.
Going back to, thank you, Councilman Challenger, with, based on the recommendation of the Finance Committee, and you heard what they said, and then the robust conversation we had about recommendation three. Are you, um, would you advocate keeping it in this year's budget and hoping a planner down the road can execute that? Or would you recommend not?
So because this is a one-time cost, and it's not a reoccurring cost, it could come back and say, once you get a planner in, they review and determine they, if they do or don't have time for this project. It, it, they may not get to it, and it might be next year. And then next year, FY twenty-seven, they put it in their budget. Either way, it's a one-time cost and it's not reoccurring. And if it does get done in FY twenty-six, all they have to do is come to the council and say, hey, can we go ahead and do a budget amendment for this? Because I would like to get X, Y, and Z done, the reasons why. And then the council would make a budget amendment.
So I guess a real direct way, put it in the budget this year? Or no, and if they need it, do a, a budget amendment, your recommendation?
I would recommend to do a budget amendment if it's needed.
Okay.
Because you can always ask for a budget amendment. And when a, a department comes and asks for a budget amendment, there should be a justification, just like when they put this budget together, they had to go through and identify the reasons of why they're asking for this amount and what it's for.
Okay, um, any other questions?
Yes.
Uh, just a follow-up, thank you, just a follow-up of Councilman Challenger's question. Again, uh, looking at the, the four fifty-seven, those but, um, so you make a number of numbers under the, under the various categories, where you talk about general government, and you say four fifty-seven benefit equates two, and there's, there's a number, so what are the sources of those numbers?
So I, personnel budget. And those numbers came from the percentages that the town would contribute to the four fifty-seven. So three percent for the all employees, and then the additional two percent for those employees under the quality.
That helps on the clarification, and thank you. And then just a, a comment, and it, and I'll, and I'll link it to a previous comment about the ninety K. I don't, I don't agree that it has to be linked to the planning director. I, I just, because you have a consulting firm. However, it does make sense to have a project manager. So you don't necessarily, in my view, you don't necessarily need a planning man, a planning director to do that. Because there are consulting firms out there that do that for eleven, because I know who they are. Because I read your stuff, so, thank you.
I just would say that is because, like a lot of the projects we have, it, let's use the rate study for an example, they are dependent on us to provide that information and run those reports. And if there's nobody here, or somebody unfamiliar, now we're not getting, it's just like with the rate study, we've been delaying it because what we did with the CIP, we missed the whole foundation of looking at what our current assets are and how we're gonna replace our current assets. We skipped over that piece completely. So if you're asking, if you're hiring a consultant, but there's nobody here to provide the data that they need to do the project, that would be the only reason why I would say to delay.
And, and, you know, I just end, end by saying, that's a valid comment, but if we wait forever, it'll never get done. And, and, and to be very frank, and I'll shut up after this, uh, you know, it's at the point where we gotta know what we're doing, and if, in my view, we should do this, but obviously, that's not gonna happen. Thank you.
Yeah, we've had it in the, for two years. It's kind of like the Dorchester Community Center. We've been talking about it for so long, but who is gonna take the initiative and start doing the project? And that is really where we, where the project manager part comes in. There's a lot of ideas, and we just haven't started them.
And there's a lot of opportunities, and now that have been identified by the Finance Committee. And I think the project manager is one that is such a solid idea that we need that. I know how much work staff here does, and I know how, um, oversaturated you all are. So that would be such a plus to have. And we just approved one, um, last, uh, last week, uh, contract. So we do have someone that might be able to assist us, at least in some of the little projects. Okay, any other questions? Okay, um, for council, uh, I want to hear from you. Are you ready to pass this budget tonight? Would you like, and I, I love the face, because I feel the same way, but I am one that will go with the majority. Uh, Councilman Winkler?
Which budget?
Yes.
I, I'm, you know, I've kind of discussed the elephant in the room, if you will. We have a, and, and I take this very, very seriously. We have a fiduciary responsibility to, to the citizens and, and the residents in the town of La Plata. That being said, and I know Councilman Challenger was alluding to this when asking the committee about when they got this information. This information came to us at five o'clock on Friday, and I did my darndest over the weekend to go through it line by line and see, and I emailed a dozen or more questions to Director Larson. I know Councilman Jenkins did the same, and we kind of piggybacked on some questions. Councilman Bryant Ward is not currently present. I think that being, and once again, I'll, I'll bring the, say this again, this is just another example of where the town is rushing to get something done. And I realize that time is of the essence, time is always of the essence. But if it was, why did we receive it at five o'clock on a Friday? If we knew we were gonna have to pass it or move it forward in seventy-two hours? And I think that does not do a good service to, to, um, the residents. So I, I would say, let's sit on it, bounce some ideas again, kind of move which one we're gonna move forward, and vote on, on the twenty-fifth.
Thank you, um, Councilman Challenger?
Not ready to proceed tonight, thank you.
Councilman Jenkins?
Uh, not ready to proceed tonight.
And I'm glad to hear that, because this is such a big, um, decision. And we do need all of, we need to sit here, look at this, and be ready to pass a budget. We have built-in time, so it's not that we have to rush through this. We just have to have it done by, operational by July first, so that's where we're looking at. So, um, we, we do our homework, we email questions, and, um, look for more emails regarding the budget. All right, with that said, reports. Councilman Winkler, do you have a report?
Uh, Historic Preservation Committee meets this Friday. We should have some updates, um, after then, so it'll be the following week.
All right, Councilman Challenger?
No report tonight, thank you.
Councilman Jenkins?
Uh, thank you, the Parkland Recreation Commission met last Wednesday morning. Uh, we had, um, a robust discussion, uh, thanks to Ms. Minor providing a, um, Pine Grove amenity package of all the proposed public spaces and recreational uses. There was a discussion about those facilities and which would, would be, quote, maintained by their, quote, associate, their HOAs versus a, a town-maintained facilities. Uh, the town will probably be somewhere, I can't speak for everybody, but be somewhere restricted because of the maintenance costs, so that has not been fleshed out. Is that correct? So it was a good discussion, and, uh, and I think we need further discussion. And, and I, I'm hopeful that there was some previous mention last month that the representative of Pine Grove would be on our agenda in, in March. Uh, so I hope that happens, because I think that's an issue we, the council needed to weigh in on, as well as some other related issues. Thank you.
Can, can I have a follow-up question?
Sure.
Councilman Jenkins, because you, you, you brought up a question that I had a resident reach out. What exactly are the, the amenities, I guess, that, that are, are going to be included or being, um, I, I, as, I'll tell you, how it was presented to me is, what is the town getting out of, whether it's parks, whether it's trails, et cetera, et cetera?
And that's a great question, uh, and I will, I, I'm remiss, I didn't forward that, that, that map to you, so I will do that tonight or tomorrow. But it is a combination of, I'll backtrack. So as you may remember, several years ago, they removed, the previous owners removed the golf course because they wanted to preserve the, the Clark's Run Valley. So they've maintained all that, they have trails, they have hiker-biker stuff, they had picnic areas, and then they have certain open space area that could be, and, and then they have pavilion. So that map and legend will hopefully provide some clarification, not only to us, but to the residents and the community, but I do think it needs further discussion. And hopefully, again, Pine Grove can come and talk about that, because that's a valid issue, particularly since, um, you know, they've done a lot of stuff, but they got a lot more to do. And so it'd be interesting to hear from the developer what their plans are, because I don't know what they are. And we ought to know that, that's a community. And again, it's not a witch hunt, it's strictly to get information to the community.
Correct. And what day are they coming next week?
I don't know yet.
I have not seen it yet.
I know, I think you told us they would be added to a, a March agenda, I guess?
We reached out to them, I have not followed up, I haven't heard back on that one. But we will, we will continue with that. Um, and my report, tonight we have, uh, an opportunity to fill a position vacancy on the Ethics Commission. I am pleased to recommend Chelsea Williams to fill the role as an alternate member. She has been an active resident for, of La Plata for eleven years, and she knows this commission very well because she has served on the board as well. Her knowledge, commitment, and enthusiasm makes her an excellent candidate, and I would like to proudly nominate her for the position. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
I'll just say, I know, uh, Ms. Williams, um, just from the community, and, uh, she's a fine candidate. I think she would do a tremendous job.
Thank you very much.
I would add to that comment, and it's, it's funny, because she was a primary opponent four years ago, and very dedicated to the community, so that's a great choice. Thank you.
All right, so all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? We welcome Ms. Williams to the Ethics Commission. And, uh, yesterday, as you had heard from Ms. Turner, we did have a, a primary, and congratulations to Rich Gilpin and Patrick McCormick on their successful bid in the primary elections yesterday. I also wanted to thank, uh, Brent Finnegan for his dedication and interest in then serving our town as well. Just a reminder, the general election will be held on Tuesday, May sixth, from seven AM, very, very early for you, early risers, to eight PM.
Right.
And as you saw Pastor McClary said, I gave, uh, the chief a nod out there. So after four thousand one hundred and forty-four days, sir, of dedicated service to the town of La Plata, we bid farewell to Chief Shinner as he embarks on his next journey. Chief, you have strengthened our police force through clear accreditation, through your leadership. You are leaving an indelible mark on our town, one that we will not forget anytime soon. So thank you for your leadership, dedication, and commitment to our town. And we wish you all the very best in all that is to come for you. And, uh, yes, if you were able to go outside today, spring, I think, is here. That means our community events are kicking off soon, so please check our website and our town newsletter. Some of the ones that are coming up is April twenty-first. I heard that the Easter Bunny will be stopping by to enjoy some ice cream with our young residents. April twenty-sixth is celebrate La Plata and our famous La Plata bed races, so there's still time. Oh, no? And we're taking a pause on the fame, I was so excited, oh my goodness, always the last to know. So let's cut that feed, April twenty-sixth, we're celebrating La Plata and everything that it has to do with that. So, um, there's no need to sign up for a bed race. And then May twenty-third is kicking off our concert series, which is just such an enjoyable time, Friday night out here, a family time, fun time, we're not canceling that, are we? Okay, thank you. So we look forward to these events. So thank you all for joining us this evening. And before we adjourn, we have a reason to go into closed session, so I will entertain a motion from, um, our council.
I gotta, I gotta read the thing. You have it, thank you.
I would make a motion to, uh, motion for closed session, the statutory authority for closed session. Our residents, reads as three zero, uh, paragraph eighty-three, consider the acquisition of real property for the public purpose and matters directly related to the acquisition, topic is parameter with respect to a specific act of vision.
Thank you very much, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, if you are in favor of going into closed session, uh, please indicate by saying aye. If not, a nay. Wait a minute, I.
Are we doing a roll call?
We're gonna do a roll call, so, um, Madam Clerk, could you please do a roll call?
Mayor James?
Yay.
Councilman Winkler?
Yay.
Councilman Challenger?
Yay.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yay.
The motion passes.
Thank you, and I move to adjourn this meeting at seven forty-seven PM. Thank you very much, and thank you for coming. All right.